You know, great for our community. It's going to help, you know, once again with our tax base and making sure that we are on solid footing going forward. You know, next thing is housing to make sure we have people have places to live. And I don't have any doubt that 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 will happen here. There's no doubt that we'll continue to do it on that side. That's it. That's my three fun things for today.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Have a good one.
We'll see you next month.
Yeah, well, no, later this month. Remember? Yeah, yeah. Don't tell him that we're not meeting in July. He'll let him show up.
And piggybacking on what Trent was talking about, Richie and I were talking about it this afternoon. It is a major coup for Lincoln County. That will bring the total employment for Bosch up to around 1,000 people. And and this is just the first of many. They're going to have, and I was telling Wayne this earlier today, they're going to have a groundbreaking later on this month, and there are going to be more announcements coming from Bosch. But we're very pleased to be a small part of that. And LEDA, I can't say enough good things about LEDA. You know, I didn't know how valuable they were until I got elected, but LEDA is so instrumental in in everything, the downtown development, everything. LEDA's got their hand in, and and a good hand. And so there will be more announcements coming. Timken has has is going to expand, so this is the first, we hope, of many, of many announcements coming. But thank you for mentioning that. Trent? Okay, next item on the agenda. I'll open up the public hearing, and this is for CZ dash two dash 2023, and I'll turn it over to Jean.
Hello, how are you all this evening? Okay, so the applicant is requesting a conditional district rezoning of 2.39 acres of land from planned business to general business conditional district for the purpose of operating an auto sales lot. The subject property is located at 785 West Highway 150. That's it's currently has four existing buildings and was previously used as a camper repair business. The land around that is a mixture of residential and commercial uses, and the property is surrounded by planned business, general business, and R25. As you can see on the map, the property is in red. And planned business, the general business is right here. It's the color is similar to planned, and then the bright turquoise is all R25. This is just an aerial, so you can see the existing buildings that are already there.
That is old Houser.
It's on 150, but that's the Houser camper. It's the same where they used to repair the campers.
And they're going to use those buildings?
They are. There's no new construction there. They're going to use the existing buildings. That's a street view of the property. This is just from the the other direction. The property is located right here. This is the Farm Credit Bank that's right beside it. This is a view from kind of in front of the food line, and you can look across and see the driveway access, and the property's here. It's got the star on it, just to give you a visual. And then this is the same view. You're coming down 150. It's to the left, and the Dollar General's to the right. This is the site plan, so that I've already said it, but they're going to be using the four existing buildings. No new buildings will be constructed. They're adding seven parking spaces for employees and customers, and four spaces for vehicle display. Most of their sales are online. They don't do a lot of in-person, so they don't need many spaces for the cars that will be there for sale. The staff review committee comments, the only comments we had were from NCDOT. They will not require a driveway permit for this. They just want to make sure that they keep the corner clear for the site triangle, which is a 10 by 70 area. And they, you know, you have to have a driveway apron that needs to be 15 feet of pavement from the road, and it has to be a minimum of 24 feet wide. The land use plan right now has this property in the suburban planning area. You can see that planned business is right beside it in the land use plan. So the plan notes that a large majority of the commercial uses outside downtown are likely to occur in planned business areas. And because this is a proposed rezoning to a conditional zoning district, if the request is approved, the property can only be used for the specified use in accordance with the approved site plan. So if there are any major modifications, it would have to come back before council. The consistency statement, the one for approval, it just states that this property is already zoned commercial, and their owner's planning to use it for another commercial use, just switching from planned business to general business conditional. The strategies in the land use plan do encourage neighborhood-friendly types of new commercial development, and it encourages the reuse reuse of existing buildings. Staff review committee. Planning board voted seven and O in favor of approving this project, and if you choose to approve this, staff recommends approving the request for the rezoning from planned business to general business conditional district, subject to the staff review committee comments being made, conditions of approval, approving the consistency statement for approval, and the rezoning be effective once the zoning administrator gets the written agreement from the applicant and property owner agreeing to the conditions. And then we would want to amend the land use plan to show it in the planned business planning area. And this is a little unusual. We don't usually ask for this, but the bank right beside it is also in the residential area. We would ask that we go ahead and rezone that property to planned business as well, just because it should be. Any questions for me?
I don't think so. Anybody here wishing to?
Ledford's here, and then I believe somebody for Houser, the property is here, Mr. Whitner, if you have any questions for them.
Either one of you want to want to speak or just be available for questions?
I mean, I could say something.
Unless you just want to.
I could tell him. I could get long winded.
I told him he only had two minutes.
Jean, if the bank beside it, if they would, if we take it in also under the same circumstances, they would have to come back before the council if they wanted to.
The bank, we're not asking to rezone the bank property. We're just asking on the land use plan. It's the future land use map, and it shows like what future planning should be. Because that bank is already a commercial property, it's been there forever, it should be commercial on the land use plan as opposed to residential. It has nothing to do with the actual zoning that it is right now. It's just on the future land use plan. It would show it in the proper area.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
What's the motion?
Motion by Christine. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, I entertain a motion to approve the staff recommendations. Motion by Robie. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda. I'll open up another public hearing, and it's for CZ dash three dash 2023, and I'll turn it back over to Jean.
This one's going to look familiar to you, because this one had come before you as a regular rezoning, and there was discussion, and it was talked about that if they had done a conditional zoning, that that would be the preference by the neighborhood and by council. So they listened to what you had to say, and so the applicant has now bringing this back. It's 11.844 acres of land, and they want to rezone it from GMC to residential 25 conditional district. It's that property that was on Burris and South Grove Street, as you can see on the aerial. This is just the zoning, and you can see this green is the GMC district, and the bright turquoise is R25. And so the majority of that area is already residential, and the property's right on the line. This is a street view of the property. This is Burris, and South Grove Street's this way. If you go behind the property, there's you cross the railroad tracks, and there's already some manufacturing back there. Across Burris Boulevard to the east, there's some residential, and then across South Grove, there's residential, and then adjacent to the property, there's residential homes as well. So the land use plan currently has it in the industrial planning area. We would ask that it gets amended to residential suburban, and you can see the yellow is the residential, and the purple is the industrial, so it's right on the line. So it makes sense that you could go either way with that property. I'm actually going to X it out and pull it up a little bit bigger for you, so you can see it better. So because this is a conditional zoning, they would have to follow the site plan that's presented to you and that you approve. So this has got eight homes. I think the smallest lot is .65 acres, and the largest lot is 5.28 acres, and these are all single-family homes. And they would have city water and be on septic tank. All the driveways will be on Burris, with the exception of this one bigger lot, and it will be on South Grove. Okay, let me go back to the slideshow. And DOT is not going to require any driveway permits. That was the only comment they had, is that the all the driveways on Burris come off on The statement of consistency, this is consistent, it's not consistent with the land use plan, but it's reasonable because a large portion of the area surrounding the property is primarily zoned residential, and the owner's requesting to use it for residential purposes. Oh, sorry about that. So staff recommends approving the rezoning of the property from GMC to R25 conditional district, approving the statement of consistency for the approval of the request, and if the zoning is approved, the land use plan would need to be amended to show the property in the residential suburban planning area. Planning board did vote seven to zero in favor of approval. So if if it's approved, we'd like for you to make a motion as recommended by staff. Any questions about this one? The applicant is here. If you have any questions of him, he didn't really feel like he needed to present since he presented last time, so if you have any questions for him, he is here to answer.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jill. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, I entertain a motion to approve the the request as recommended by the staff.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve as recommended by staff.
Motion by Christine. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Motion carries. For the record, Daphne, it was three to one with Robie voting no. Okay, thank you. The next item, I'll open up a public hearing and turn it over to Richie. It's what we've all been waiting for.
Exactly right. Just kind of wanted to go over some highlights of the budget that was proposed at the last meeting. Again, we would have a new tax rate of 50 cents compared to the 56 that we have now. This would include the pay study Group C. We would continue with that. This coming year will be Group A. We also are in this budget, and the general fund are asking to fund an additional $400,000 toward infrastructure. Some of that is paving, some of that is stormwater repair, and then sidewalk repair. In the water and sewer fund, there's no rate increase. We are continuing to put money into our infrastructure and our water plant, our wastewater treatment plant, and then our water and sewer lines. And then in the electric fund, no rate increase as well, and we continue to put money into our tree trimming program, which has paid dividends over and over and over through the storms that we've had, and also upgrading some of our system in areas that we know that we've got issues. But be glad to answer any questions. I'm not going to go through the whole spiel that we did last time, and then welcome anybody from the public that may have comment on it as well. Any questions from council? About anything specific when it comes to the budget? I want to, like I said again, thank council, thank staff. This is not an easy budget, but I do think it is it is definitely a budget that is going to meet our needs now and meet our needs in the future. So looking forward to seeing some of these projects completed as well.
Is there, did we have anybody sign up?
No.
Is there anybody here wishing to speak about the proposed budget? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
What's the motion?
Motion by Christine. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the propos, well, it will be, it won't be proposed. It will approve the budget as presented.
We have to approve the budget ordinance, and then we'll have to approve the schedule, fee of schedule, yeah, the schedule fee. I'd like to make a motion to approve this budget.
Motion by Kevin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, let's see, is the fee schedule?
Separate.
Yeah, separate. I'll entertain a motion to approve the fee schedule as submitted.
I make a motion to accept the fee schedule as presented.
Motion by Christine. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, that's the end of the public hearings, and we'll go to our regular agenda. For those of you that have a score sheet, we're down to number four. Consideration and approval of the First Federal Plaza project bid, and I'll turn it over to Nathan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As you know, we've talked about this at the budget retreat back in March, and we've had this project in the hopper for, what, two years or longer, Richie?
Yeah.
So finally making progress. We held a bid opening on Thursday, March the 4th. We had two firms to submit bids, and you have the tabulation sheet there in front of you. Houser Masonry Incorporated submitted a bid in the the base bid in the amount of $209,600. We broke out the pavers into two alternate bids. One alternate was for mortared-in pavers, the other was for sand swept pavers. It's our belief for the sustainability of the page, pavers, that we mortar those in. So you can see the the alternate bid for Houser Masonry was 57,000. We also wanted a comparative cost to see what the comparison was as well. Carolina Metal Buildings, their base bid came in at $191,724. Their alternate bid for mortared-in pavers came in at $36,200 for a total of $227,924. And it's my recommendation that the contract be awarded to Carolina Metal Buildings in the amount of $227,924. That's for mortared-in papers.
Any questions?
We would like to add that the money for this project was received by either a grant from the state. We also received a grant from Timken, and then donation from Tourism Development, and we received a grant from Electric Cities. So we we've been able to put this together at no cost to the taxpayer.
How do we accommodate when we get grants like that from somebody?
Yeah, why?
How do we thank them?
Well, in this situation, we will have a ribbon cutting when we bring all those representatives in. Yeah. And and we haven't really talked about it, but in the other projects, like at First Federal Park, if you go, there's a plaque just for the people who donated.
Yeah.
And so we try to do that, and because, you know, where we're very fortunate with Timken is they only, the Timken Foundation only gives grants to the community that the plan is in. So they don't, the grants stay in Lincoln County. They don't go to Gaston, Catawba, Mecklenburg, only in Lincoln County. Now, if they had a plant in Gaston Gaston County, then they would do the same thing for them. So we've been very fortunate, and we've been fortunate with our state grants. And Tourism Development, I've said it over and over and over, if you look around the city, they have funded so many different projects, whether it's art or the patio project there on Sycamore and Square. So we're very fortunate to have the ability to reach out to these different organizations and ask them to assist us, you know, and and what we try to do is make sure the projects are given back to the community, and there's no fee involved. The Splashpads is a prime example. You can go there and, you know, take your kids for free. So these are the projects that they that I think that they really want to give to, more so than a project that would require a fee of some kind. But we're very fortunate to have these organizations around us.
Okay. No other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation that Nathan has put forth, and that's Carolina Metal Buildings.
What's the motion?
Motion by Jill. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And before we leave this, David, thank you for all the work that you do.
David's been instrumental in a lot of the projects we've done, the Betty Ross projects, the Fisher Pier, the kayak launch, the ball fields down there. He's also been involved in the Highland Drive project, so and it's nice to have somebody local that that is, when you call them, they don't mind jumping in the truck and running over there right quick. We've done that quite a bit with David, so. But he's never said no, I can tell you that. Parking lot project, I mean, I could keep going on and on, but he's he's been heavily involved in a lot of our projects.
It's nice to have something that's already paid for, too.
Yes, yes.
I appreciate the opportunity. You don't know how many times people have gone way out of town to find somebody to do the work.
Well, and they might have a lower upfront, but the mobilization calls come back to get you in, yeah.
Well, we've got to get in working relationship with David, and I just wanted to take a minute to recognize all the work that he's done over the years. Okay, next item on the agenda is the fireworks, and I'll turn it over to Richie.
Every year, we we do a contract for our fireworks, and traditionally, we've been very fortunate. Our our costs have stayed around the 13, $14,000 range. As you know, with the addition of the turf field at Lincoln High School's football stadium, we really, we don't feel that that's an option anymore for us to fire or shoot the fireworks at the stadium. There's too much liability for us, and because we've been down there when the the blow over, when the winds pick up, and we've had to pick up pieces of fireworks off the field. So we started a few months ago saying, okay, where are we going to go? And we we've settled on City Park. We think it's a great location. In fact, we're going to try to, through some tests, kind of see what areas that you can view the fireworks around town, so we can let the public know these are some good areas. In saying that, we met with Joel from the East Coast, and his recommendation was, you know, if we if we use more four and five, it's going to make it more visible for more residents. We were using more three and fours. So he gave us an additional cost of 3,000, so that the price is 17,000, but it's going to be a better show, and it's going to reach more people. So I feel like, considering we're not having to clean the stadium up before and after, so that manpower is saved, we don't have the kids that kids activities anymore, because COVID kind of took that away, I don't know that as our total budget, we'll probably spend less shooting at City Park than we did shooting at the stadium. So I feel comfortable in requesting that we go to the 17, and we we, like I say, we shoot the larger fireworks. The four and fives, we've shot those before. It's not like we're doing something different. It's just going to be more of them. So that's my recommendation to council, that we do the agreement with East Coast for the new price of 17,000.
Hey, you heard the recommendation from Richie. I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
I will approve fireworks.
Okay. I don't want to see Kevin with a match around there. Kevin has made the recommendation. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item is schedule of discounts and resolution on that, Richie?
Actually, looking at 4C, 5A, 5B, and 5C, they're all related to our contract with the county. Something that was brought to our attention is that we never really established a contract with the county and and with Ms. Sane and her office, so we're we're going back and including that all in this year's budget, and that's something we'll need to do, I guess every four years, Susan, to, yeah, unless, you're not retiring before then, are you? Okay, all right. So if anybody's got any questions on 4C, 5A, 5B, or 5C, they're they're pretty self-explanatory. The discount is something us in the county do. You get a discount if you pay it before, I think, the September date. And then the next one is allowing me, if there is a refund, and it's less than $100, to be able to approve that. I think it also mentions the the finance director could be that as well, but this one, this one will be approved by myself. 5B is just the agreement with the Lincoln County Tax Department, and then 5C is the order of collections. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, or Susan can answer them. Otherwise, I just felt like I could probably sum them all up at one time and not go back to back to back, so.
All for that.
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Yeah.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve 4C, 5A, 5B, and 5C.
Make that motion to approve.
Motion by Jill. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Wow, that really, we're ahead of the game then, isn't it? Okay, now we're down to item six, and adoption of the city salary schedule and schedule of budgets. And before I could even say it, there's Tanya.
Get on up here. Every year, when the budget, after the budget has been approved, there's a salary schedule for general employees, and then a separate one for sworn law enforcement that reflects the changes that the manager has put in the budget. So that would include the pay study C mentioned, the 3% COLA, and it shows the revisions that are made to those positions. And so it's part of policy that, because of the changes approved in the budget, that we bring before council the revisions to that pay plan and salary schedule, and number of budgeted full-time positions based upon what he presented to you, because it requires council approval.
Any questions of Tanya? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the salary schedule, schedule of budgeted positions.
Go ahead.
Motion by Robie. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tanya. And next item, I'll turn it back over to Richie for his monthly report.
I've laid a few things at your spot there. It's one of which is we get each year, well, we get this basically for the retirement system, and to keep to keep a city from spiking, meaning they they basically take an employee and then and give them a salary of a certain point that wouldn't match their retirement. And naturally, when I took the city manager's job, I got thrown into that pot, as probably after another year and a half, then I'll be removed, because I've had four years in that position. But we've had it with different people, but we are required by state statute to present that to council, just so you're aware of it. The other one is the report that we get from LEDA about housing. I would like to, if you would, to turn to the Lincoln. And you'll notice, and this is the first time, that's why I wanted to wanted to include that, that there is actually a reduction in from from year to year, or from month to month to month. So they're just just a slight, but there is there is a reduction. I think a lot of it, too, is based off what houses were sold in that month, because this is the month of April. So it's it's, I don't think it's nothing major, but at the same time, that may mean that the housing market's cooling a little bit. I think interest rates going up have probably caused that, but there's still such a demand right now for that 250 to $400,000 range house. I don't think that, you know, I don't think I don't think there's a fear factor right now, by no means, and in some ways, it might mean that more people are going to purchase if that price continues to reduce. But I do think the majority of that has to do with interest rates. We know as interest rates go up or down, that's going to affect the price that people are going to be able to get, and that's going to affect the number of houses. But I like to include that each each month that they that they give us that. Don't don't worry about the the next page that just got thrown in. That's my reminder to send birthday cards to employees. But the next one is the homeless report from the police department. They they do that every every month. They provide information, any interactions, any arrests, and and kind of a just what has been done throughout the month. So I like to provide that to y'all for for review. I would like to say that we had an excellent Live After Five. I don't know if you could ask for better weather, but I'm so appreciative of what the DDA has done for our downtown, those events. You know, like I say, they're 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 free to anybody that wants to come up. You know, like I say, they're, they're, they're free to anybody that wants to come up there. We had a full, I mean, that's the most cars I think we've ever had and the crowd, like I said, seemed to really have a good time. But over the years, Betty and, and Tommy and, and their board have really done an excellent job with building our downtown. We mentioned Lita, city staff, I mean, it's, it takes a village, but our downtown's a great place and I've been talking to the local merchants from time to time and they're, I know they're excited to be downtown and, and it's on demand. I mean, it's hard to, to find a facility or a place to go into right now, so I'm really, I'm really excited about, about that. Just reminder that our recycling's tomorrow, I'm sure y'all got your notice, put your blue cans out. It's, it's hard to believe we're already in the June, but we are. But I, I would like to mention something. I, I thought about that today. Tanya and I had the benefit of being in a meeting, or several meetings this morning and individuals we met, met with represented over 100 years of service to the city. Four individuals, over 100 years. I think the, the most was 34 and the, the least was 15 years. And I thought about with this group of individuals, how many times they had left their loved ones to come out and, and provide a service to the citizens of the city. And they're not the only ones. I can tell you, everybody in this room, department heads, have sacrificed time with their family over the years, whether it was at entry level or where they're at now. And we always, I always try to recognize individual departments and I try to recognize individual employees and so forth, but I, I wanted to take a moment to thank those families that we are leaving when we leave to come work for the city. And we don't do that enough. I, I thought about your, your spouses. When y'all come and you're at a ribbon cutting or if you're at a council meeting, you're not at the house, you know? And a lot of times, these employees are, they're, they're, they're on call on holidays, they have to leave birthday parties for, you know, repairs, they have to leave Christmas events and so forth. And we don't really ever recognize the, the, the family that's being left, but I would like to say that we appreciate them and them allowing their loved one to come work for the city and come in the middle of the night and on the weekends and, and all that our employees are, are asked to do. So I just wanted to mention that. We don't normally mention the families of our employees, but they're as important as, as those employees, because I thought, you know, how many times that guy's been here 34 years and he's been on call a lot, how many times has he had to leave his family to come in the city to make repairs so somebody else could, could have water that night or, or sewer that, that afternoon? So I just wanted to mention that. I don't know that we've ever mentioned that, but we're very appreciative of the people who, who allow us to, to, to call their, their loved ones back in to come work for the city. So I think all the department heads would, would agree that the, those people, they serve as well, so. But I didn't really have anything else? Well, I'd say I just...
Maybe we ought to plan a little...
We did at one time. We had a family thing and it was, we found out that everybody's so busy, it's hard to get them at one place at one time.
The city's only as good as the employees.
Correct.
We have an excellent staff.
Always keep that in mind.
Yeah, we were, I've, I've mentioned that time and time again, that I, I was blessed. I, I, when I took over, you know, we had an excellent management team, we still do. You know, we're in the process right now of hiring two new department heads and look forward to that, but we, 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 we've mentioned it, our greatest assets are employees and to me, that's my greatest, you know, goal is to continue to recruit and retain the best of the best, because I always said, we want the best serving the best, so. But I just wanted to mention that because, you know, you know, you think about that wife of that 34 years, she's missed a lot of time with her husband because he was, he was, you know, like I said, coming in to, to help us, but. Any, any other things that council had questions or anything about, the handouts and so forth?
Thanks, Seth. We, we do need to go into closed session for the, for the press. We're going to reverse the order a little bit so you won't have to sit through waiting for us because we don't anticipate any, well, there won't be any action taken in closed session. But do either one of you have any questions? Yes, sir.
What exactly is the First Federal Plaza project? What does that entail?
I'll let Nathan...
Yeah, if you want to.
What? You, you can go ahead now.
Okay. It's something that we've asked again in planning tour a while now, starting on the north side of the town, 603. It'll be like a plaza patio field with some tables, benches, possibly some lighting for ambiance, then on the bank across the trail from First Federal Park. There'll be a outdoor...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Also, basically a plaza type field, possibly...
We can send you the drawings too.
Yeah.
You have the rendering?
Yes.
Trying to make our, our park downtown more accessible and more usable by, by everybody.
Would that be used for concerts?
Yeah, cool.
A small production, that's it.
Listen, I'm talking about the date.
This was, well, I was just...
The contract was...
What it involved, what it made to the First Federal Park project.
We're trying to get Rodney to do a boxing exhibit.
Give it, we'll have to do a boxing exhibit.
Rocky sits.
Give, give me a week.
Any other questions?
Can we get Mike moving?
We thank you and good night. Don't take too long or you'll miss Phoenix beating the dickens out of Miami.
Okay, we will then, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Make that motion.
Motion by Jill. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries and TJ, if you'll tell us why we're going in closed session.
We're going in for discuss property acquisition and according to NCGS 143-31811185.
I can look that up. Sure you want to get that up.
No, you just can't do that just anywhere, TJ.
I can do that.
Yes, I can.